Do you have teams running for, did you get a link for teams? How do we like turn it on, I guess? How do we turn it on, I guess? John, are you there?
I am here.
Good. You can hear us when we talk and everything?
I, I can hear you when you talk.
Good. I didn't, you're on the screen here. I just didn't, wasn't looking in the right place. He's already on here. We're set. He's on here and he can hear us and we can hear him. Yep, we're good. Thanks. John Butchlich, we do not have a licensing board meeting tonight. So in a couple of minutes, if you want to kick off. Yep, thanks.
Good evening. I would like to call the order to the City of West Bend Board of Public Works. We have two items on the agenda. Item number one would be the approval of minutes from the meeting of October 6th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second, Alderman Zingstein and Alderman Schmidt. Are there any corrections or deletions? There are none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, permission, permission to award contract West Bend Skate Park Design. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. This evening, our department is requesting permission to hire Grindline Skate Parks Incorporated to assist with future development of a potential skate park here in West Bend. The contract would include design, planning sessions with staff and Friends of West Bend Skate Park, public input sessions, construction documents, marketing materials, and cost estimates for a three-phase project. Our department sent a request for proposals to seven different skate park design firms. And we, we received two proposals back with support of the Friends of West Bend Skate Park. We reviewed the proposals and determined Grindline would fulfill our requirements. Grindline has been, has been in the skate park industry for over 20 years. They have designed and constructed skate parks in Portage, Walbatosa, Milwaukee, Sun Prairie, and Sheboygan. The contractor, contract with Grindline would be about approximately $50,830, which would be paid for by Friends of West Bend Skate Park. We would also like to thank Mike Nass, who has committed $50,000 towards this project, knowing that that $50,000 would be needed for planning and design and to hire a contractor or consultant to get us through this process, design, construction document, documents and the marketing documents. So we very much appreciate Mike Nass and his family for their financial support. If approved this evening, we will immediately begin working with Grindline and Friends of Skate Park to develop a skate park for our community. This process should be completed sometime in February of next year. For the process of design, construction documents, putting the marketing materials together, things like that. And then at that point in time, we, we would begin a fundraising campaign to help pay for this project. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Motion, Alderman, Alderman woman, Seitzer, and second, I, Alderman Zingstein. Are there any questions for Mike?
So the rest of the, the funding is going to be volunteer?
It, it would be donations and some park impact fees. We've already reviewed with the city attorney that we could use some impact fees to, to support this project because it is a new, um, we have an existing skate park. It's modular, things like that. This would be a concrete standalone facility, much different than what we currently have. So the city attorney felt that applicable that we could use park impact fees for something like this. Again, park impact fees many times, well, they come from residential developments and we try and use those in those developments or for large community scale projects at the Aqua Park, Downtown Riverwalk, large projects that would impact the entire community. The skate park, we're not building five skate parks in West Bend. It would just be that one. So that's why the impact fees could be used, but no property tax or tax dollars towards this project. Just staff time during the development fundraising, things like that.
And then is this a revenue source? Is this going to be a revenue source eventually?
Generally speaking, the skate park is like a playground. It's open for general use at all points and times. But we would like to run some programs and some camps at this location. Once, once we get maybe one or two phases up and running or constructed.
He's associated with it.
Yep, absolutely. Is it going to be a huge money maker to offset the construction costs? Probably not. But some future organ, in the future, some organized activities and some programs and events. And we even want some competitions out there, things like that. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And to clarify what Mike was saying about the park impact fees, they're reserved for either new parks. So if it's a, you know, we're putting one in a new subdivision and the city is doing that with park impact fees or for new amenities. So like, we couldn't use those funds directly for just rebuilding the bathhouse, right? It has to be something like the Aqua Park where it's a new amenity, the skate park where it's a new amenity. It's not, hey, we need to repave the, the basketball courts or something like that.
What's the anticipated full cost of this, all said and done?
Excuse me. We don't know at this point in time. If I would have to estimate, it would be north of $500,000. That's why we're looking at like a three-phase approach. So we get the, a certain dollar amount, we can maybe get phase one constructed, another dollar amount, phase two, phase three. And that's not uncommon with, with a skate park design, something like this. The one I'm thinking of is Portage. Great design, same company. Our skate Friends of Skate Park thing, the people from West Bend, they literally travel to Portage to use that facility. Again, they did a, a three-phase design fundraising. I think each construction phase was like two to four years apart. So funds become available, you know, build that phase two, phase three, things like that. So.
Mike, do you have a, a site where this new place is going to be?
Great question. That was something I wanted to mention. It would be in Regner Park, just to the east of the sport court that we have there right now. When we went, when we reviewed different locations, we literally looked at 25 locations throughout the community. We had 19 different criteria that we looked at, primary and secondary, electricity, restrooms, parking, visibility, things like that. And we also took this list and our proposal or our, our ideas like the police department, things like that, because we're going to need, obviously, we want it visible for obvious reasons. We want electricity there for cameras and restrooms and parking, ADA compliance and things like that. We, again, we looked at a wide variety of properties and even properties we don't own. We looked at school district properties. We looked at privately owned properties to make sure that what, this is the location. Regner Park's a community park. There's already lots of noise. I'll say it like that. PA systems, special events, where we're looking at putting it there by the sport court. We have electricity there. We have restrooms over by the hardball diamond. We have baseball games going. There's lots and lots of activity going on. And we, even you look at security and visibility, we don't ask the police department to be there 24/7. They have way better things to do. But everyone we know owns a cell phone and the busier the park is, the better off we're going to be, things like that. So busy parks, we have less issues. So that's why we want to be really specific and particular. And we, we took our time to make sure that we were choosing the right location. And it, it's a skate park. Some people will drive to get to the skate park, things like that. But Eisenbaum Trail is close enough. The Riverwalk's close enough, centrally located somewhat in the community. So lots of good reasons to put it in Regner Park at that location.
I agree with you totally. That's, that's a great choice. It's, it's open, visible for everybody. And accessibility is, is definitely a huge asset there. So good job. Okay. Is there any other questions? There are none. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Be no business before the Board of Public Works. I adjourn as chair.
I call to order a meeting of the Finance Committee. We have four agenda items this evening. The first is the approval of minutes from our regular meeting, October 6th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlich and Alderman Schmidt. Any additions, deletions, corrections? There being none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Our second engine, second agenda item is Resolution Number 38, write-off of special assessment charge for 2,100 Northwestern property. Is that something Ian, you want to take this evening?
Yep.
Great, thank you.
So the, the resolution in front of you, the journal entries and stuff like that, if there's questions about that, you can certainly ask Carrie about those. She'd asked me just to give you some of the background on this property. For anybody who isn't familiar, this is the property that we took down a large industrial building just on the north end of town, right off the Eisenbaum. So it's right where the Eisenbaum kind of switches over to gravel. It's that property right there. The city had, I mean, this is a, this is a long saga with the raise order that goes back 20 plus, like 20 years before it finally came down. The city raised the property in 2020. The costs, I mean, it took a while for all the costs to come in. And then at that point, we were kind of waiting to see what the best option was because it's either we can assess the property for the, the costs that we have or we can seek a judgment against the prop, the property owner to try and enforce those, to try and recoup the funds. There's concerns with both those options. Ultimately, about a year and a half ago, the city billed all of those fees out to the property owner because there was some rumor that the property was going to be sold. There's been a whole bunch of delays with that. It's kind of a mess at the moment with land contracts and foreclosures and all, all sorts of stuff. It's kind of a mess. But there still is hope that we can recoup these funds. It is a essentially perfected tax lien at this point on the property tax bill. So we don't want to mess with it at all. Right now, all we're doing is leaving it out there as a delinquent, you know, delinquent special assessment on the tax rolls that needs to be paid. This is just for the budget purposes, saying we're not going to recoup this money this year. The money was not spent this year. The money was not spent last year. It was spent in 2020. And there was grant funds involved in some of the process as well. So this is money that was spent several years ago. It's just right now, whether or not we can recoup it in the future. But it is a tax lien. The good news is that's going to survive most, you know, like bankruptcies or foreclosures, stuff like that. So there is hope that, that it will be paid eventually.
Thank you, Chris. Sorry. Thank you, Ian. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingstein and Alderman Schmidt. Any questions or comments?
Sorry.
Bill, go right ahead.
If you had a crystal ball, you think we will, we'll recoup it?
I mean, I, there's a good chance we will. I, it is, it is a good location to redevelop. There is a identified responsible party for the environmental contamination. But the other, the, kind of the other big factor here is that was the site where Orangeburg Pipe or was, was produced, which if anybody is not familiar, is like a cellulose pipe that they infused with coal tar. And I'm, I, I, I don't know for sure, but I, given what they found in the like parking lot areas, my guess is when it would start to disintegrate outside, they would like put it down and drive over it as traffic bond. So there's a significant amount of contamination there that there is a responsible party for that has, is not bankrupt. It's, it's Eaton Corp. is the responsible party. So there's a good chance that there is money to remediate it. It is developable. It's right on the river. So I think that eventually it will redevelop. And at that point, we should be able to hopefully recoup these funds in one way, shape or form.
Alderman Sparts, did you want to add a comment?
Just that it is, the property has a lot of pipe buried in it. Been up there, have worked with it. I was involved with some of the litigation.
Okay. Thank you. Any more questions or comments? We have a motion, a second on the table. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you, Ian. The next is item number three, to approve the 2026 capital budget and five-year plan. Jesse, I'll let you take it over.
Thank you very much. Just to walk through the city's 2026 capital budget. In the packet, there was a cover memo with some summary information. But then the capital budget proposal set forth as a whole. Just want to walk through some of the highlights of the capital budget. First and foremost, the tax rate is unchanged from our last presentation. At our last meeting, I provided a budget update and a tax rate estimation. That tax rate estimation did include the capital portion of the budget. So there's no change to the tax rate with the presentation of this capital information this evening. So what we are looking at for a 2026 capital budget is about a $10.6 million overall, broken down into two primary parts. We have about $8.7 million of non-tax incremental financing related projects and about $1.9 million of tax incremental financing projects. So within the TID districts, a couple of the TID districts. Chart A on the cover memo that was supplied with the packet breaks down what a pie chart of the, the types of expenses that we're seeing. We're seeing facilities of about $5.2 million, roads and engineering of about $2.9 million, vehicles of $540,000 and equipment of $45,000. Now, I did hand out and I did provide a copy to the clerk for inclusion in the minutes, an addendum, if you will, with updated graphics. And a good point came up over the course of the week as I'm looking through what was set forth in the packet. What would our quote unquote "normal" capital plan look like? Because that chart that's included with the packet includes the very unique project of a new fire station. And so the addendum that I provided at the dais here this evening shows what the customary or that $4 million portion of our capital plan would encompass. $2.9 million worth of roads and then broken out across other departments for various uses. So really that commitment to not only roads, but also public service or, or emergency services is very apparent in the capital budget for 2026. To, and further leaning into the commitment to roads with regards to the capital budget for 2026, we are looking at an uptick in city funding. Now, what may look like a decrease in road funding from '25 to '26 is really due to the fact that ARPA funds, that Federal American Recovery Plan Act, those, those dollars don't exist anymore. So those would be rolled out of that road program total and that is the primarily, and with that extra work came the extra lead lateral replacement program dollars. So those two big items roll out of our road program for '26. However, we are, the, the standard city allocation towards roads is actually increasing slightly outside of those special programs. Taking a look and looking at the highlights of the non-tax incremental financing projects, there are two separate borrowings. The fire station is a standalone borrowing financed over 20 years. Then the remainder of the non-TID capital projects is a borrowing of $4 million financed over 10 years. And the city's ongoing practice of capital borrowing is cyclical in that new funds are financed only as the debt service of previous borrowings are retired or finalized. So taking a look at that $4 million customary capital plan that we have for '26, of the 4 million, and I'm speaking in round figures here, so bear with me. I don't, I don't get too far into the dollars and cents. But using round figures, of the $4 million non-TID project list, 2.9 million of that is allocated towards road, road construction and design work. So again, yes, please.
Could you refer to a page on this?
Oh, sure. These are my talking points here. So I am walking through, there is a list of capital, of the, the listing of capital projects is on page two of the capital budget packet. I'm walking through my talking points, pardon me. But yes, the, the listing of the '26 projects is on page two of the capital budget. On the bottom of the page is a rendering of the new station one. So that, that'll help with the project listing. We have a $406,000 final payment for fire engine number 12. We have $300,000 allocated for the replacement of boilers at City Hall. These are at the end of their useful life. We had a contractor come in to do some repairs fairly recently and point blank told us the metal casing around it is getting to the point of being so thin, it's not able to be patched. So I'm figuring folks will want heat in the building and hot water. So we are going to go ahead and put that in the capital budget. Unfortunately, it's not one of those projects that's very visible to the outside world. But it is very important as part of that overall facility's maintenance efforts. We have a total of $135,000 of inflationary increases for three DPW trucks that have, that were on back ordered. This dates back to, I believe, 2022 or '23 with trucks that we have received and we're outfitting. And we have just seen some inflationary increases. And so we're finalizing those truck construction and payments. We have $100,000 allocated for a replacement play structure at Menk Playfield, $45,000 for camera monitoring upgrades within our dispatch center, tactical firearm replacement for the police department, HVAC maintenance at the library. This comes with a bit of a caveat. We have $40,000 for ongoing maintenance and repair of, this is the brand name, not just descriptor of the size, but the mammoth HVAC unit on the roof of the library. It is a bit long in the tooth, but the actual original design of it was to be modular, where you could take parts and pieces out and replace that versus replacing an entire unit. However, what we are running into is the coolant within that system is actually outdated. So it is becoming more and more cost prohibitive to recharge that system. So this is something we will have to plan for as far as a very large-scale project in the coming years. For right now, we are taking the proactive maintenance and repair approach with that allocation. We are looking at $21,000 for an HVAC installation at the Riverside Park Pavilion. This is a very popular rental and just looking to make it even more popular over the summer months with some HVAC upgrades to that building. Now here's a wrinkle that I want to speak to the Finance Committee and ultimately the common council about. So in my haste to compile the capital projects budget, I had spoken with Public Works Director Niemann about moving one of the trucks out to 2027 in order to better fit our budget allocation for 2026. I had grabbed two cells on my spreadsheet and slid them over instead of one cell. So thankfully Doug brought it to my attention and then I did a deep dive. How can we look to move truck 1244 back into 2026 to the tune of $150,000? So with that, I approached all of the city departments, looking at where are your projects trending currently? Is there anything trending under budget or are there projects that have finalized that have remaining balances left over? And with that, I've been able to accumulate $107,000 towards that 150 allocation. The remaining $43,000 will be forthcoming through general medical transportation payment to the fire department. Later this year, the fire department will be coming forward with a resolution to allocate the, or yeah, accept those funds into their budget for this budget year. This is in essence, quote, "found money," for lack of a better way to put it. So what the plan would be as part of that resolution to accept those funds would be to allocate $43,000 of that general medical transportation funds towards the fire truck payment and move $43,000 of borrowed funds and apply that towards DPW truck 1244 to get us to that $150,000 figure for the 2026 purchase of Public Works Truck 1244. Now, that is a bit of a unique accounting approach to achieving this goal. And I appreciate all of the department's efforts in coming forward with the parts and pieces to make this happen. And the beauty of it is by, by, by working with existing funds and found dollars, the borrowing itself does not change. That $4 million borrowing for the capital plan does not change. So that is the beauty of this approach, while we are still able to accomplish the outlay for the DPW truck that was inadvertently moved to 2027.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Line item, truck number 1244 was given for $300,000 for '27.
Yes, and that is an extra wrinkle to the creativity. So these trucks are ordered in two pieces. They're ordered as a chassis, that'd be the 150, that we will get in 2026. However, you can't actually order and get on the schedule to get fitted for the parts and pieces, like the plow kit and things like that, the dump body, et cetera, until you have that truck. And there is actually such a lead time on getting scheduled for the upfitting, they call it. That wouldn't actually happen until 2027 anyway. So we're looking at 150 in 2026, 150 in 2027. So these charts will be updated as part of the final budget presentation. But most importantly, the borrowing itself, that $4 million borrowing does not change. And we're able to accomplish everything that I had just set forth. Switching gears to the tax incremental financing district-related projects, there'd be a $1.9 million financing package associated with that. That's broken out into about $500,000 for road improvement and design and engineering work. This does include design work for the 18th Avenue increase, or advancements or improvements rather. And then $1.4 million for the design and construction of some regional stormwater facilities associated with the tax incremental financing projects. Now, it is important to note that the separate projects within the TIDS, these, these borrowed funds are paid for through the TIDS. The increment is captured via increased property value that is created by a specific project. And that increment or those, those taxes created by that additional value is captured and then applied towards this debt service. So that is how these projects would be funded moving forward. Now I did speak quite a bit about borrowing funds to finance these large non-TID projects in particular. Because again, the tax incremental financing districts cover their own debt service. So the non-TID projects, that borrowing, it's important to note that the city is in fact limited in the amount of funds in which it may borrow. However, I'm quite happy to report that the amount of funds that we can borrow is restricted, as I mentioned, to the equivalent of 5% of our 4.9 billion with a B, equalized value. So that said, we are well below, or about almost $180 million below our debt capacity. So we're well within our capacity here. And again, as I mentioned before, we do approach the borrowing for the capital plan in a cyclical nature. Old debt is retired, paid off, and new debt is brought on. So it is a cyclical approach to avoid over, overloading our municipality. to avoid overloading our municipality. With that, appreciate everybody's help on this, but the 2026 capital budget did come together with some tough decisions. Well, I appreciate everybody's help with coming together for that Public Works truck. There were a couple of things that have been postponed. The sidewalk program, pavement markings, and one of the Public Works trucks were postponed. That being said, I'm not happy about reporting the postponements of those maintenance efforts. This can't be looked upon as a permanent solution. It does make 2026 work, but this will be a conscious effort for us to reinvigorate the sidewalk program and pavement marking updates in future years. Complete list is here. It will be cleaned up with that Truck 1244 being moved back into 2026. And again, happy to report that the tax rate does not change from previously reported and the borrowing amount does not change from previously reporting. That is my report regarding the capital plan.
Great, thank you very much, Jesse, and I appreciate your work and the teams, greater teams' work in getting to the point of being able to add that utility vehicle back into this year's budget. I know that was a discussion we had last week, so glad to hear that that has happened. At this point, I will entertain a motion to approve the 2026 capital budget and five-year plan.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Buchlich and Alderwoman Sizer. Any questions or comments for Jesse? Bill, go right ahead.
Yes, I was going back to the HVAC unit that's proposed for Riverside Park. Who's paying the monthly bills on that? I'm assuming the city picks it up? How's that going to be?
That would fall within our operational budget, correct? It would be a facility that, to keep the lights on, yep, that's all part of that utility bill for that building, yep.
And then whatever revenue we get from renting out the unit? How often is that unit rented out now currently?
My understanding, in speaking with Director Yench, is that it is a very popular rental, so I do see this paying benefits and dividends for us in the long run here. A little bit of spending money to make money, making it a little bit even more popular. Yep.
Any other questions for Jesse? There being none, I'll just add the comment that I appreciate, Jesse, your work and the entire team's work in getting to the point of really addressing the needs that we have from a capital standpoint here within the city. Again, I know that you and the team of department heads are very conscious of the taxpayers' dollars as we look to borrow here in this community and in addressing, as you put it, there are things that we do have to push off into next year because we really need to address the needs, not necessarily those additional wants and desires that we have. So I'm very pleased with the capital budget that you've brought forward. There being no further questions, all those in favor of approving the 2026 capital budget and five-year plan, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I believe that was an aye to the yes, correct? I was too fast, Alderman Sparts.
Yes, it's an aye.
Wonderful, thank you.
And yeah, it was getting flipped as you were.
Yes, and I forgot to wait for yours to chime in, so that unanimously passes. The next item is Item 4, to schedule the date and time for the public hearing regarding the 2026 operating budget. I'll turn that to you, Jesse, or to Ian.
That would, grab the microphone? That would be at our next council meeting, November 10. We do have the one meeting in November, so that would be the 6:30 PM normal start time, so that would be, yep.
All those in favor of scheduling the public hearing regarding the 2026 operating budget on November 10 at 6:30 PM? Well, I guess I'll, I need a motion on that, don't I?
Yes.
Yes, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to.
Thank you, Alderman Schmidt, and a second by Alderman Buchlich. All those in favor of scheduling the public hearing regarding the 2026 operating budget, November 10 at 6:30 PM here in the council chamber, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That passes unanimously as well. There being no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn as Chair.
Good evening. It is Monday, October 20, 2025, and this is a meeting of the Common Council of the City of West Bend. More than 24 hours in advance of tonight's meeting. Notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in accordance to Wisconsin state statutes. Clerk, can you please confirm this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. I invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We recognize the quorum of our council here with us tonight. We have Alderman Sparts calling in on the phone tonight. Thank you for being here virtually. And we have Alderman Berquist excused absent tonight. Our first item of business is approval of our regular meeting Common Council minutes from October 6, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Buchlich and Alderwoman Sizer. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Our consent agenda tonight is the permission to award the contract for the skate park design, the Resolution Number 38, which was the write-off of special assessment charge on the 2,100 Northwestern property, and approval of the 2026 capital budget and five-year plan. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sternig and Alderman Buchlich. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a public hearing tonight. John, do you have any comments before we open the public hearing, or?
Just one quick one. So within your, within the downtown operating plan that you received in your packet, there are two appendices. One's for a summary of the 2026 projects, and then there is a detailed spreadsheet. I just want to run through that priority list of summary projects.
Hang on just a second, John.
It's page 48 of the packet.
Page 48, thank you.
So the chart that you see on page 48, we had a draft, and then we had the final. Somehow the draft remained in this packet that you received, so I'm just going to run through those, the list of the items which corresponds to the detail, which is on pages 49, 50, 51. So, sorry, administrative costs would be 700, the audit would be 320, electricity is 8,000, landscaping would be 34,236, water is going to be 1,500, marketing would be 1,000, facade grant remains at 30,000, the holiday decor would be 34,050, future projects would be 2,322, and donations to Roots and Branches would be 1750.
And that totals?
113, 878, 40. And the project plan was approved by the bid.
Okay, thank you. For those of you that may not know, John serves as the Executive Director of the Downtown West Bend Business Improvement District, commonly referred to as the Bid. And so this is their project plan and budget for 2026, and this requires a public hearing. So I will open the public hearing regarding the special levying assessments for the Downtown West Bend Business Improvement District. If there's anybody here who would like to address the council on this matter, now is your opportunity, and just come to the podium, and you will be heard. Again, the public hearing is open. We invite you to come to the podium. Anybody wishing to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing. Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim and Alderman Sternig. There's been a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is now closed. Our first item of business is the Resolution Number 39, which is the levying of the special assessments for the Downtown West Bend Business Improvement District for 2026. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim and Alderman Sternig. This motion's now on the floor. Any comments, questions on the bid for next year? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Item number three is our 2026 budget update, Jesse?
No significant updates to the budget, other than we did receive our manufacturing assessment numbers from the state of Wisconsin. Our tax rate remains unchanged unless you go out many decimal points. So that's a nice thing where no substantial change caused by getting that information from the state. I am open for any questions. Otherwise, if you would like to sit down and have a little bit more of an in-depth conversation prior to the November meeting on the 2026 budget, please feel free to reach out to my office and we can schedule something. Thank you.
Great. No action required on this tonight. We'll take action on November 10, but any questions or discussion tonight on the budget?
Just a comment that to everyone on the council here, if you do have any questions, again, please seek out Jesse to discuss those in advance of that meeting on November 10 to get any answers, any questions answered or information required for you to be able to approve the 2026 operating budget. Thank you.
Yeah, very good. Any other comments, discussion? All right, we'll move on. We're going to talk about ordinance number 16, an update to the Municipal Code Section 12.501, and this is a regulation on licensing cats and dogs.
So if everybody recalls, we did a comprehensive redo of Chapter 12, I don't think it was July, something like that. This is just cleaning up a couple of things that slipped through. The, for whatever reason, the old code had that the license year, I believe, started in April for cat and dog licenses, and for many, 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 many years, it has actually been January 1st, so this is just correcting that. And then the kennel license option, this is just bringing over some language that clarifies that kennel licenses have to be, have to be submitted, or have to be approved through the zoning code. And then, sorry, I gotta double check and blanking on what the other one was that we... Carrie, do you remember what the other one we deleted was?
Emotional support.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yep. We had had, in the code, we had set up that a decreased, like a 50% license fee for emotional support animals. Because the licensing goes through the county system for fee collection, it's not practical to separate out a separate fee, so we just eliminated the reduced fee. If you're, and that's completely compliant with the ADA, you can require licensing as long as it's consistent with all other animals. You can't single out ADA animals. But, so if you're registering any type of animal, it's just going to be under the same fees and the $8 and $11 or something like that fees. It's not like we're talking hundreds of dollars to license dogs and cats. So anybody, whether it's a pet, or whether it's an emotional support or a service animal, is going to pay the same cat or dog licensing fee.
Great. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Buchlich and Alderman Zingshaim. Any questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Actually, I'm sorry, I had one question. Are there any other, you know, pets that could be licensed in West, so hypothetically, like a pot-bellied pig or something like that?
So we do require pot-bellied pigs to be licensed, that's a different section.
That's a different section.
Yes, but this was just the cat and dog licenses, and then we basically refer back to that for pot-bellied pigs.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is discussion and possible action regarding TIFF Number 14 Developers Agreement with PKH Holdings LLC in the City of West Bend. John Fellows is back.
Good evening. This is an item that was, I think, two or three meetings ago that was tabled. The developer has asked for it to reappear before you. It's a fairly simple development agreement. It essentially addresses some incentives. One of those you addressed in some other paperwork, which was a sale of 60 acres of the property, of a property over in the Milwaukee manufacturing development area, as well as a development incentive grant that would occur in possibly two phases if they developed the building in two phases. There is also a financial guarantee that if for some reason the value of the building and the facility were to fluctuate, they guarantee a certain amount.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sternig and Alderman Zingshaim. Any questions, discussion?
I have one question. It says the sale of 60 acres was for a dollar. Is that normal to just charge a dollar, which a discount off 3.5 million of that piece of land?
It is a common tool that is used for municipalities. Sometimes we would sell it for a dollar, sometimes we would sell land at a discounted rate. It's essentially an incentive, so often we may also, we may sell land, for instance, for a higher, higher than a dollar, maybe at market rate or slightly below, but then sometimes we offer a developer a pay-go that would pay them over time. So it's really just sort of how you structure a property from that perspective. In this case, it, selling it doesn't really necessarily mean we have to go out and borrow any money, like if we were to do a grant or something to them where we would have to, from that perspective, but that is considered incentive. And then number, one other facility over there, we did sell a property for a dollar, and the other facility that's currently under construct, or completed as of, I think, February, it was a discounted rate for sale.
And what are the parameters, again, of the grant?
The grant, basically, it's... So it's a $250,000 grant to defray the cross of infrastructure and site preparation. Essentially, they anticipate that they may develop the first phase in two phases. So Phase 1, they would get 77% of that grant, and then as they move forward and complete the second phase, they get the other 23. There is a possibility they may build both phases at the same time. And that would be granted to them at the time of completion.
Thank you.
Yep.
And then, John, just to confirm, as a part of this, the minimum property valuation guarantee they have is $15 million for that, for that initial phase, correct?
Page six.
Yes, it's a, the grant amount for, well, it'd be, I'm sorry, what was your, so the minimum value guarantee is a $15 million project, correct?
Okay.
Was that your question?
Yep.
Yep.
Which means, so just to clarify then, what that does mean is that we could have a valuation for tax purposes that is higher than that, but it cannot drop below that $15 million threshold, correct?
Correct. So if it comes in at 15 million, that's great for everybody. If it comes in higher, let's say 18 million, that's great for everyone also. It's going to have, it's going to pay off from that perspective. If for some reason it came in at 14, they would, they would have to make up that extra, the negative component of that in basically what the taxes, they'd have to write the city a check.
Sure.
To make up for that tax.
Thank you, John.
Clerk, did I take a motion already?
You did, yep.
Any more discussion, comments, questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. John, stay there. I think you've got the next two items as well. Airport hangar leases, Lot 27 and Lot 25B.
So both of these items, Items Number 6 and 7, what you'll see before you is what might look like a different hangar lease. It is a different hangar lease. Our hangar lease was based on a model from the BOA from about 30 years ago. In 2016, they actually provided municipalities with a new model. So between our airport manager, Ian and myself, and our office staff, we actually took... Uh, so between our airport manager, uh, Ian and myself, and our office staff, we actually took their model and the best parts of our older ordinance, our older leases, and brought them together to present with you the lease that's in front of you. Um, it has been approved by the person who's looking to purchase, uh, the actual hangar. Um, otherwise, it's pretty, uh, standard, but it does build a lot of extra paragraphs and things in there to um, just make it a little bit more modern for both the leasing and the lease or.
Why don't I entertain a motion on item number six, which is, uh, the approval of an airport hangar lease for lot 27 at 344, is it Hain Drive?
That's how I say, yes.
Hain Drive. Is there a?
That's correct.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Schmidt.
I'll second that.
Second, Alderman Butchlick. Any questions, comments, discussion?
Could you just highlight a couple of things that may be changed in here?
Oh, sure. Uh, well, just about every paragraph changed, I'll be honest, but um, so, eh, the format changed to make it more clearer, so that we actually have headers, um, those types of things, so like property description, term, um, from that perspective. Um, some of the other things that we did is, um, the hangar use, let's say, for instance, in item 11, we've clarified uh, what actually can be stored in the hangar. So the, um, FAA does not allow hangers to be used for storage of personal items, of uh, motor vehicles, of RVs, you're supposed to have aeronautic equipment. So we do do an inspect, an inspection once a year, uh, but this lease clarifies that, uh, um, so that, um, when we do have a situation, we can pull the lease out and say, well, you, it's in writing now, so they kind of know. All they, though, most of them all know, know what they're supposed to keep, uh, and not keep there. For instance, um, it also uh, clarifies a couple paragraphs, because uh, we, airport hangers used to be considered personal property, we don't have personal property in the state anymore, so there's some paragraphs that Ian worked through, um, addressing it as real property from that perspective. Um, some other items, uh, that we did is our current leases, and the former, uh, BOA agreement actually had the rent only going up every three years. Uh, we did modify this, uh, we're gonna try to start to transition, so there's the potential that it could go up every year. Um, but with that, there's a caveat that those who have essentially the possibility of going up a year, it can't go up more than somebody who has gone up three, uh, the three-year people and the one-year have to still, um, match. I'm sure Ian would have a legal term for that. Um, but those are some of the highlights, I guess.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, and I'll entertain a motion on the second lease, which is lot 25B at 320 Hain Drive.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sparts and Alderman Schmidt. Any questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright. We've got a few items here that came out of plan commission and, uh, forwarded to the common council tonight. Uh, item number eight and nine kinda go hand in hand, it's the same property. And, uh, the first item is to amend the 2020 comprehensive plan for the city of West Bend, and it's a change in the recommended land use. And it's for approximately 64.13 acres of land, located at the southwest corner of East Paradise and South River Road. And it's the change of recommended land use from single-family residential wetland and open space to multifamily residential wetland and open space. So I'll entertain a motion, and we can, uh, put that on the floor for discussion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Schmidt and Alderman Butchlick.
No.
Uh, Sternig, geez, I wasn't even looking the right way, I called you the wrong name, sorry. Alderman Sternig and Alderman Butchlick. Alright, um, John, do you wanna stay up here?
Oh, I can't, you, you just seemed like you were rolling along, so.
Yeah, well, we've got this item on the floor now, so this is the recommended land use change, and then the second item, if this passes, is the zoning. Um, I understand our developers are here as well, if there's other questions, but do you wanna maybe describe the, the project and, um?
Um, I was actually just going to, uh, introduce the developers, they do have a PowerPoint, if you would like to take 10 minutes and have them walk through the project, uh, they, they are all queued up for that.
Yeah, I think, let's do it. That'd be great.
John, is it up on the screen right now, or?
Yeah, are we gonna see it?
That starts, awesome.
Yeah, he'll, can you guys, what do you?
Nothing yet.
It's coming up right now.
We should be able to click it now.
Alright, it's coming live. John, on this just forward button. Correct.
Oh, yeah.
There we go. Excellent. Well, good evening, council members and staff. My name is Craig Reddits with Fiduciary Real Estate Development. Um, with me is my team, Paul Schmider, our director of development, and, uh, Sam Elliott, who is the development coordinator for our team. Um, pleased to be here, and we've had two appearances in front of the plan commission, including a public hearing. Um, it has been quite a few years, a little bit, uh, background on our company, six of our eight um, owners are either Washington or Ozaki County, so this is very near and dear to our hearts. Um, over the last several years, we've been looking for a parcel, um, very diligently, and, uh, that's where we came across this, uh, Muth family property, and really excited about what we have to present. Um, always, when we get in front of a new, uh, community, I like to tell who we are, uh, we're the guests here in the community. A little bit about our company, Fiduciary Real Estate Development, we were founded in 1984, last year we celebrated our 40th anniversary. Um, we have approximately 400 employees. Um, most of those are specifically at the communities of which we own and manage. Um, our focus, residential, uh, almost exclusively multifamily. Over the years, we've done some other things, but we really found our home, uh, really enjoying the multifamily market. Uh, major markets for our company have been right here in the great state, um, Milwaukee, Madison, Green Bay, and touchdown into northern Illinois a couple of years ago. Um, we have over 9,000 residences, um, throughout the Wisconsin area, likely the largest private owner of, um, apartment communities in the state of Wisconsin. Um, one significant thing I've seen over the years, um, we tend to be long-term holders, uh, when we develop properties, we, we're in for the long haul, and, uh, so we look at communities where we wanna be for the long haul, and specifically, yeah, all set.
We just can't see it on our screen yet, he's, he's working on it.
Well, the, the pretty pictures aren't yet. Um, so, basically, our assets, we, we do a significant reinvestment, um, since we hold, um, communities for a long time. We, we believe in doing capital improvements and keep our investments in our properties, so they're top-notch. Um, getting to the site, do you have it in front of you yet?
We don't.
Not yet? Okay. I'll, uh, I'm sure you all know the corner, but this is at, uh, Paradise, uh, Paradise Drive and River Road. Um, the quick trip is directly northwest of us at that intersection. Uh, it's the Muth family farm, 64 acres of land, um, it really is a beautiful piece of property. Very flat, fairly limited wetland, although the site breaks up. Um, we in particular, um, with regards to the site, um, we're looking, as Sam will share with you, we're looking at a two-phase plan. Um, as we get into this, to really utilize the way the land lays out, and also to be sure we have the appropriate demand. We do a lot of market study before we come into a community, and again, this has been going on for several years, and we'll be glad to be here. So I will turn it over to Sam Elliott, as he will go through kind of the conceptual site plan, and hopefully you can all see that soon.
Good evening. Nothing yet?
Is, is that little button green, or?
Can you? Try, try and plug it in, plug it back in.
Yeah.
They keep saying.
Red's bad. Oh, did you hit the click search thing?
I did.
You did?
Okay.
You guys can't see anything, correct?
It's not saying no signal, so that's a good sign, maybe.
There we go. Thank you for your patience.
Of course.
Alright, Sam.
So Craig just pointed out the site here, just to reorient everybody. The areas you can see, in the tannish color, are kinda what's high and dry, and where we ultimately intend for most of the development to be. Areas that are green are generally kinda wetlands that, well, we intend to keep in, you know, their, their natural state, undisturbed. So, here's some bullet points, I think it'll be more useful for me to flip to the next slide with the picture, and I can kinda narrate these. So, well, what you can see in the top right is our clubhouse. Um, we're very proud of our clubhouses, they, you know, are usually close to $2 million in cost. Have a pool, um, it kinda serves as the front door headquarters of our development, with some site amenities for our residents, including, like I said, the pool, grilling stations, that's where our leasing office is, and most of our staff is based out of, and really kinda serves as, um, like I said, our front door and headquarters. And the rest of the site, as you can see, like Craig said, we have a two-phase development planned. So, in the first phase, we envision about 230 units. And as you can see, there's a lot of green space on this site, and that is by design. This is meant to feel much like a single-family neighborhood. Although we are put in that multifamily bucket, we really like to, you know, benchmark ourselves, eh, against single-family and condos as much as anything. We feel there's kind of a missing middle market in the housing market between people that own single-family homes and people who live in apartments, and we feel that that's kinda where we belong here, so. Every building is two stories, each residence has their own private front door, much like a condo or a single-family home, and, and many homes have an attached garage. So it's, it's really intended to feel, again, like a, like a condo or a single-family home alternative. And, you know, with that, eh, we, we do cater to kind of a wide variety of renters, but two of our, our strongest, stickiest cohorts are kinda people in my generation that are trying to enter the single-family housing market, which is challenging. Um, but this allows you the feel of that single-family home, um, without achieving ownership yet. And on the other end, we see a lot of people, might be empty nesters or retirees, exiting the housing market, and this allows them to still, again, have that single-family, um, home feel without the responsibility or maintenance of a home. And, kind of in the middle, we do see professionals, sometimes as a lifestyle choice, who may travel a lot for work or something of the sort, that choose this, um, despite having maybe the ability to, to afford a single-family home. So, hopefully that helps paint the picture of kind of what the, the feel is that we're looking to achieve. On this page, this is a sketch rendering of kind of what we envision the finished product to look like, so you can see, like I said, there's a private, direct front door for, as, every residence. Um, and then the next page, you can see this is the backside where the garages would be, which, this would be, these rear sides would be kind of intentionally oriented inwards, because we are, you know, more proud of, uh, what's on the previous slide, as being the prettier side of the buildings. So, this is still a work in progress, but we're looking forward to digging into the design more with our consultants, and we, we like where, where we're at and where this is headed. Back to the site plan here, um, one thing to mention, you can see the preserved home on there, that we do plan on preserving the historic home there, and providing a, a berm and additional landscaping, um, to add to the already mature tree line. And, we're gonna CSM that off and sell it to another user. Otherwise, um, this is kinda where the questions usually pop up, so please feel free to fire away.
Uh, just a silly question, but, uh, have you got a consideration of the fact that there's a driving range right next to it, and that you might need a big net, or?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked. We actually, uh, started a dialogue, including today, went back and forth with Stingers, and
Okay.
Um, we are, we are confident there's enough space here and enough elements that we can work together to achieve a, a logical solution. I know they are, they're planning on improvements, including a, a net uh, next month, and then, you know, we, at a minimum, will have a kind of a major berm with mature pine trees, and maybe look at changing how some of these buildings are laid out to increase the setback, so.
This is not gonna be section eight housing in 10 years?
No, this is market rate, everything we do is market rate. Um, you can see in our comparable properties, generally, our resident base comes in about 30% above, um, the median income for that local municipality. We don't necessarily design it that way, um, but that's kind of where we end up. And when you back into, you know, the, the, there's a 25% general rule of thumb nationally for what people will spend on their housing of their income, and we see that play out in real time in our portfolio, so, kinda with where we expect to rent these units, we would expect a similar, uh, demographic. Thank you.
Any other questions? When would you break ground?
Next summer, hopefully.
Joy, may I have a comment?
Yeah, go ahead, John.
This, this project is being brought into the city, um, I, I know I had received some feedback regarding the multifamily, and I know at the plan commission, we heard some of that, um, why don't we bring more single-family? This is, this is filling a niche in the city. Um, the, the thing I like about this project, and, and I think is good for the city, is they're doing it without TIF financing. And seeing, they're doing this on their own, and it's really gonna, uh, it's, it's just a positive for the city, it's, it's bringing in a need, it's filling a niche. Um, we have a lot of single-family housing being developed and in works uh, with new subdivisions and that kinda thing, so I, I think it's a good project, and, uh, I'm, uh, hoping that it goes well, and I liked your concept with trying to be conscious with the, the look of it. Um, I saw their project in graphing, was really impressed, I think it's nice. Um, I'm kinda in that niche with the retiree thing, and not quite there to move into multifamily yet, but, um, i- if I would, that would be the kind of development I'd probably be looking at, so. Um, I, I think it's a good thing for the city, it's gonna bring some benefit, it's gonna increase our value, and it's being done privately. They're not, they're not asking for public dollars at this point. Um, we'll see what happens, but, uh, I think it's a good project, so the zoning's within And the other thing is, single-family in that, that subdivision, I'm kinda advocating for it, I guess, uh, there is an issue with the water level, and if we do single-family houses there, the, the basement, they're not gonna be able to have basements, and single-family houses in Wisconsin have basements, I mean, that's pretty much what people want. So that, that's an issue there, so they're building this with that in mind, preserve that. Um, so that's environmentally conscious, I think. That's it.
All, all good points, John, thanks. Um, during the plan commission, we had a public hearing, we had, um, a few neighbors, if you will, that lived to the east and to the south, um, expressed a little bit of concern over just increased traffic maybe in the area. Um, Matt, John, or even, uh, Craig or Sam, I can't remember some of the others, it was traffic, it was preserving, um,
The natural space.
You know, the natural space, which you've addressed by, obviously, you're pointing out where a lot of the wetland areas will stay, and a lot of green space and things. Um, I can't remember anything that was overly concerning, if you will, from the neighbors, but, uh, do I kinda have the gist of that?
Yeah, I, I think one of the major concerns was, and, and John hit on it, and you commented on it, was single-family versus multifamily, and I think we're, we're doing a lot to address that additional need for single-family within the city of West Bend, with the, um, next-gen housing development on the south side of town. Um, the additional, uh, single-family homes going on, um, along River Road, um, just south of Washington. Um, so I think we were meeting some of that need, um, and to their point, I think this does fill a niche within our community. Um, there have been, so I think that was one of the loudest, right, and, and we hear that oftentimes with multifamily developments in the city of West Bend, it's where are the single-family homes, and is there really need for this, and to, to their point, um, they don't move into communities without doing their And to their point, they don't move into communities without doing their their due diligence and extensive research on the market ability of what it is they're building because they're in business to make money too. I will say that in my interactions with them, Sam and I really appreciate your level of communication, answering questions. They've been very, very pleasant to work with, including up until just hours ago in the in the conversations with with Farin Wanta from Stingers regarding concerns that that he raised about having a driving range right next to residential-type housing and vice versa. And the fact that this was something that was on fiduciary's radar already. Obviously, they weren't in a position to start having conversations with with Stingers yet until we kind of got through the phases of what we're going to be voting on here momentarily. But again, I appreciate the cooperation and the communication that you've already had with them. And and from the alderman in the district, just answering questions to be able to answer the questions of constituents of mine. So I greatly appreciate that as well.
So with the some of the concerns that were raised in regards to the traffic in the area, is there any, is there going to be any anticipated need to improve River Road specifically? Considering we're developing that area and I'm assuming we're going to have increased traffic on there because of that. But is there going to be any need for that down the road here? Do we anticipate that?
I don't I don't know the answer to that specifically, and I think part of what will be done as part of the process is a traffic study. I think as as Max, if I recall from the plant commission meetings, the general feeling was most of the traffic will actually be exiting and entering onto Paradise as opposed to River. I think as we look at this development and other developments on the south side of town, they may have a greater impact along River Road than this development in and of itself because of them, the flow of traffic into the community versus out into the country. That was, if I'm paraphrasing, kind of what Max had had said at plant commission, it wasn't a grand overarching concern of his from a from a traffic standpoint.
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine is the same property, and this is the zoning of the property. So it's 64.13 acres of land located on the southwest corner of East Paradise and South River Road. Changing the permanent, well, changing the zoning from temporary to RM3 multifamily residential, NSW nonshoreland wetland, SW shoreline wetland, FPS floodplain storage, FW floodway, FPW floodplain wetland, and FWW floodway wetland districts.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sparts and Alderman Sternig. Any questions, comments, discussion on the zoning? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Craig, Sam, thank you guys very much. We look forward to this project. It's going to be, it's going to look nice. And we're excited to have you investing in West Bend.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for being here. Item number 10, ordinance number 19 to rezone approximately 0.73 acres of land and adjacent right-of-ways located at 508 North Main from B1 Community Business District to B2 Central Business District. Jim?
Good evening. We're asking council to consider the zoning change. The request came in from the property owner. He recently acquired the property. Was looking to do improvements to the property and to the building. As a part of this, we evaluated the current zoning and the zoning surrounding and felt that the change from the B1, which had some restrictions with parking and lot areas and setbacks and whatnot, to zone it to the B2, which actually brings a lot into better conformance for setbacks and parking requirements. So we're asking the council to consider the change to the B2 from that B1.
Thank you, Jim. All entertain a motion?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Sternig. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Our last item tonight is ordinance number 20 to amend the existing B1 Community Business District with a planned unit development overlay district. And this is located at 840860 West Paradise Drive.
Thank you. So we're asking the council to update the planned unit development overlay for this. The developer has actually sent a proposal in and plant commission approved a site plan for a building addition onto the Marshall's Building. This would actually be another tenant space for Burlington. So as part of the package of this with the PUD overlay is that it incorporates the site plan as part of that development package. So we're just asking council to actually update the approval of the PUD to include this new addition for the building.
Great. All entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sparts. Second, Alderman Schmidt. Any comments, questions, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. We'll move on to our reports tonight, our bid board meeting from October 7, 2025.
Yes, one moment here. So, yeah, we we met and on the 7th, we just, we discussed approval for purchasing holiday ornaments with a $5,000 cap. It was unanimous decision. We got some outline for the tree lighting ceremony. For those unaware, November 6 at 6:30 PM is going to be the tree lighting ceremony. And there was feedback about landscaping baskets and plantings for for the following year. And we got a number of, quite a few updates on musical acts and other holiday festivities coming to downtown, the, you know, the the bend and the the business, excuse me, the downtown West Bend Association. Some highlights of that. With the tree lighting, there's going to be members of the of the cast of Christmas Story, the Bowleys in there, Hot Cocoa, and and then, you know, previews of some of the other activities, like the Christmas Kindle. Excuse me, I always mispronounce that. So, yeah, there's a lot of great things coming up, a lot of great musical acts. And so you can certainly check the the bend's website for a lot of the details. And we got a an update on the downtown master plan quarterly report and and just some feedback about future agenda items. So it was a relatively brief meeting, but productive.
Good. Thank you. Tourism Commission on October 7.
Yes, so also present for that, we got a presentation of the financial report from Mike Genge and a very successful year. A lot of overview, some of the activities, you know, everything from the the water park to a number of the other activities this year for tourism and and some of the upcoming events such as, I mean, currently, we have the the exhibit of the of at the art gallery Frank Lloyd Wright's furniture and other interesting things there. We got, we we went, we got an overview of proposed budget, room tax budget for 2026. And and we talked about upcoming promotion grants. And we talked about doing a three-year program, trying to give incentive to continue continue some of the grant recipients to continue their efforts. And so maybe considering a restructuring of all that. Yeah, other than that, we got a calendar for 2026, so, yeah, a lot of things in store.
Good. Thank you, Rhett. Plant Commission. Matt, you want to do that? John, you doing that one? That'd be great.
I got it, Rudy.
Go ahead.
Okay, we had a plant commission on 10/7. We did a, we had a public hearing on the land use and zoning for the South River Road and Paradise Drive property, changes to multifamily, and we approved that. We had a public hearing for 508 North Main Street, which is what we just approved, and we also approved it. That's why it came to you guys. So that's, the tenant is going to update the existing building. There's a nice project going there, it sounds like. So that was updated. We had public hearing in action on the overlay for the Burlington, and we approved that, which is a new retailer coming into town. We approved the sculpture installation at the pedestrian bridge, the North Pedestrian Bridge on the river by the Museum of Wisconsin Art, and that's going to be done by the Friends of Sculpture. We approved a certified survey map condensing two lots into one at 1518 Blue Bell Drive. Certain aldermen might know where that is. And we recommended proceeding with the vacation of the campus drive up at UWWC. And that will be coming, I'm sure, more on that. So that's pretty much it. Oh, wait, I do have one more. We also scheduled a public hearing for land use and zoning changes at Highmount Road. That's the project on Stratford Drive that is they had, they had to do some changes from single-family back to multifamily. And they asked for a hearing on that to have that come back through because as they went through their costs and their development, they determined change some things. And finally, we received an update on the downtown master plan report.
Great.
That's the plant commission.
Thank you. Were you at the airport commission meeting?
You were at the airport? I was at the airport commission meeting on October 9. That was a week of meetings, that night.
Yeah.
Had an update from the manager and it was a quick meeting. That's in a nutshell.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. How about the bid facade grant? Anybody?
I can give some reporting just from the notes, but I was in prison for the for this meeting. But John gave a status update on the current facade grant recipients and their projects. Those recipients would be Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Goman and Husars. And the committee was going to reach out to those currently awarded grants to just see how they're doing with their work. There was a consideration to modify the grant application timeline to open in October and close in January. All were in favor and wanted to open the application to twice a year. The committee also agreed on opening the application period in October and closing in January for the first round. The second round would be when, you know, staff finds most acceptable, so probably to be determined. And targeted marketing was discussed as a way to advertise grant applications, opening, get more input. And then there was more discussion of future agenda items and a reminder that we've been made a gold-level community through connected communities. And the committee will meet to pick a building to receive benefits for that level. So that's just from the notes, so it sounds like it was a productive meeting.
Sounds good. Thank you. Administrator report?
Just a couple of things for the council this evening. Very pleased and want to continue to report on the success of the West Bend Wire newsletter feature. We have now right around a dozen questions queued up, and they are continuing to come in. So we've taken the approach now, we are with the popularity of this, we are, myself, the communications team are kind of going through and double-checking the questions that have been received for anything that has a date sensitivity to it or a timeline associated with it, like if it's coming forward to plant commission or council or anything like that. That way we can get out and answer that question in a timely manner. As an example, while it wasn't necessarily coming forward to a committee or the council, we took last Friday's question. That was actually taken out of order. It was regarding the intersection upgrades on up on Highway 33. That was just well-received as that was a common theme question and getting more and more energy behind it. So we figured that was something we wanted to get out in front of with a communication piece, and so that was published out out of order, so to speak. We are going to try to stay with the as-received approach, just to be fair to everybody who is submitting questions. But we are starting to actually have to, which is a great problem to have, be a little bit more in the review mode of the questions that are coming in to make sure that we don't miss something with regards to a timeliness or date sensitivity. Lastly, with budgets starting to wind down a little bit, I want to switch gears a little bit and work with the communications team on setting up or establishing a coffee with the administrator, a public event. Just come on out, have a chat with me. I was kind of put put behind a little bit coming in right after the flood, kind of getting used to the day-to-day operations in an emergency way, and now it's starting to see the regular day-to-day operations. It's a great learning experience, but want to try to get out and about a little bit more now as things are starting to settle a little bit. Now that I've said that out loud, I'm sure I've totally jinxed that, but that is my intent. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, Jesse. Any alderman reports tonight? No? I had the honor of attending the 9/11 memorial that came through. It was at Marine Park. I think it was Thursday, Friday, Saturday. And our police and fire department in in working with Kewaskam as well brought a escort. They escorted the the exhibit through Main Street. We had the big American flag flying. Our communications team had the drone in the air and got some neat footage of that. So I I believe it was organized by Pete Retler at Marine Park to have that come through. And so had the honor of watching it, the the escort, and then went and saw it on Thursday last week. And then I went to the Charter Senior Living Open House last Thursday. That was really, really nice. They are up and running. They have residents moved in. They're still waiting on a couple of licenses for memory care and assisted living from the state. So I've been trying to help with connecting them with our state senator, Dan Fein, to help try to move those licenses along within the state because they have even more residents waiting to move in. But if you haven't seen that property, you are all welcome at any time to go see Commoney and Ivy. They're great people and they're just so excited to show it off, and and that's off of Sand Drive just down the road. Also, while I was there, it's 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 hard to miss that across the street, Jim Emmer is building a lot of new duplexes. And construction is going along very nicely over there. And now that the construction on Charter is done, I think he's going to have a lot a lot better chances of people buying those properties maybe faster than they were. But so just nice, nice developments going on over there. Jesse and I have a meeting coming up in a couple of weeks, I believe, with Rob Jakes, the CEO of West Bend Insurance, our largest employer in town. So want to make sure that we continue getting Jesse out and about and meeting people. Jesse came and spoke at our morning rotary group a couple of weeks ago. And just, you know, he's he's obviously busy learning West Bend, but want to make sure that we that I can help do everything I can to get him out to meet, meet people out in the community as well. And he's been been always available and willing to do that. So that's been a lot of fun. But I don't know, that's about it. Can't think of anything else. Yeah, Bill?
Yeah, the PFOS filter is, and facility is up and running.
Talk about that a little bit.
I had a ribbon cutting up there last week, and that was really neat to go in there and to tour it. And it's all ready to go and up and going.
Yeah, that's another facility. If you want to tour that at any time, talk to Jesse or Ruth or Travis, and we can get you in to see that facility. It's very impressive. It's all done. It's up and running. Pump number one or four, whatever the pump was next to the river that was shut down basically for four years is back up and running thanks to that treatment facility. So really neat project there. The building next to it is going to get painted to match the new building. They probably won't paint it until the spring when the weather's nice, but that's that's looking really nice up there. I was actually also at my daughter's end-of-the-year banquet for tennis at Ridge Run Park. And if you enter the back of Ridge Run Park, which I admit I don't do very often, it's kind of out there where Cedar Community is. That's where the White Family Cottage is located, and I can't remember if that came to located, and I can't remember if that came to council or if it was just Plan Commission, but there was an anonymous donor who invested a lot of money into rehabbing that cabin, and it looks really, really nice. If you want to go see that, I'd recommend doing it now, because the leaves are beautiful out there as well, so, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to mention, my family had got an opportunity to go to MacLauren for the luminaries event, and I mean, I was blown away by how many people showed up for it. I mean, it was a really wonderful night out, but they, I think they completely sold out of their concessions, and just a real nice walk at a beautiful park, maybe not as visited as some of our others in West Bend, but really impressive new addition with a playground and so forth. Even in the dark, my kids enjoyed the slides and the, so yeah, it was a, it was a, it was a good night, and yeah, get out there while the weather is still agreeable, I guess.
We will not have a meeting until November tenth, and it's our only common council meeting in November, so just like Rhett mentioned earlier, November sixth is their Christmas tree lighting downtown, time I think is five thirty. There's going to be some celebrity actors there, as Rhett mentioned, from the Christmas Story movie, and it's, past handful of years, the weather's been great, and it's a huge crowd, so look forward to seeing you down there if you can make it to that on November sixth. Anything else? There's always a lot going on around here, if you're looking for something to do, just make sure.
Trick or treat.
Trick or treating is this Saturday, from four thirty, I think, to six thirty, or?
Twenty-fifth.
Four to six.
Four to six.
Twenty-fifth.
Is that this Saturday?
Yeah.
That's this Saturday, John, you better get home.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I'll be home.
Thanks, thanks to everybody for being here tonight. We'll see you at the Christmas tree lighting, and have a great, great evening. We're adjourned.